We will now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee Municipal Authority for February 26, 2024. We will begin with the implication by Trustee Tracy McGee, Paula Black, and Let us stand.
Lord Byron, mighty and merciful God, our gracious Father, thank you for this day, thank you for your grace and your mercy. We ask that you guide us as we go through the business of the city. We ask all these blessings in your own hand, son, let us say amen.
Amen. Let us look to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Marilyn Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Creed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Pearl Ann Boyadi Craig.
Here.
Patrick Hale.
Here.
Thank you. Item number one.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of regular session November 27, 2023, and special call December 11, 2023, or take other necessary actions.
The said minutes appear in our packet on tonight. Do we have any corrections to the minute, or do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes. Roll call.
Patrick Hale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Creed.
Yes.
Marilyn Coleman.
Yes, item one passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for all city departments for the month ending January 2024, or take other necessary actions.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, so we have four year claims for MMA for the 31st. Staff recommend approval and happy to answer your questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Miller? What's the pleasure of the body?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the claims. Roll call.
Patrick Hale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Creed.
Yes.
Marilyn Coleman.
Yes, that meeting is adjourned. We will now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority for February 26, 2024. Roll call.
Mayor Marilyn Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Creed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Pearl Ann Boyadi Craig.
Here.
Patrick Hale.
Item number one.
Consider approval of minutes of November 27, 2023, or take other necessary actions.
Said minutes are in our packets. Do we have any corrections to the minutes, or do we have a motion to proceed?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes. Roll call.
Patrick Hale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Creed.
Yes.
Marilyn Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of Muskogee redevelopment claims for January 13, 2024 through February 16, 2024, or take other necessary actions.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, the claims are before you. If you recommend approval, happy to answer your questions.
We have the claims before us. Do we have any discussion on the claims, or what's the pleasure of the body?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the claims. Roll call.
Patrick Hale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Creed.
Yes.
Marilyn Coleman.
Yes, that meeting is adjourned. We will now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee City Council for February 26, 2024. Roll call.
Mayor Marilyn Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Creed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Pearl Ann Boyadi Craig.
Here.
Patrick Hale.
Here.
Do we consider approval of the minutes for the special call City Council November 13, 2023, regular session City Council November 27, 2023, and special call City Council December 11, 2023? Those minutes appear in our packets on tonight. Do we have any corrections to the minutes, or do we have a motion to approve them?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on those minutes. Roll call.
Patrick Hale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Creed.
Yes.
Marilyn Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Do we now consider the consent agenda, which consists of items from November 13? Are there any items that need to be removed that place on a regular agenda, or what's the pleasure of the body? We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Roll call.
Patrick Hale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Creed.
Yes.
Marilyn Coleman.
Yes, item number 14.
Receive presentation from Eddie Warrior Correctional Center on their plan to release program to provide job opportunities and career training, and take other necessary action.
We just hope please they have the new Eddie Warrior Correction Center warden here with us tonight. I'm going to invite her to the podium to make the presentation, give her introductions of who she is to this council, and we're happy about the information that she has to present tonight. Ma'am, you got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman, City Council. My name is Kristy Sweat. I am the new warden at Eddie Warriors, which is our female facility in the area. I wanted to present a new initiative that the Department of Corrections has presented to our facility. It's not new to the department, however, but it is new to Eddie Warriors. But before I go any further, I did want to kind of give you a little bit rundown of what we've been doing at Eddie's. So we have over 180 ladies right now that are enrolled in college courses. These ladies have, they will complete their degrees before they are released from their incarceration. And we did have the highest numbers of graduates last year within the Department of Corrections. We have over 80 residents right now that are in their GED program, getting their high school diplomas. We have a program called Career Tech. Career Tech provides these ladies with skill sets as plumbers, electricians, carpenters, and forklift certifications as well. We have 27 ladies currently enrolled in that program and another 244 in our Career Ready program. We also have an agriculture program that we just started last two months offered by OSU. We have a master gardener program. They're coming in and presenting these programs to our ladies. When these ladies leave, they will be certified master gardeners. We have three gardens growing right now and a greenhouse as well. It's taken off a huge initiative. We have Goodwill of Oklahoma, provide services for our ladies. The ladies are receiving OSHA certifications, first aid CPR, and customer service skills. They too assist with job placement skills upon their release if they need to. We have a cosmetology program where these ladies are getting a cosmetology license, and they are guaranteed a job once they are released. And last but not least, here in the Muskogee area, we are, we partnered up with Mr. Rich at the Gospel Rescue Mission. He is now a part of our program. He provides ladies with job placement skills, interviewing skills, resume writing, et cetera, and once they get to a certain level within his program, he'll take them out and they'll start working at the rescue mission, getting some on-the-job training, and he will assist them with job placement. I said all that to say, I have a lot of ladies there with a lot of skill sets. And what we are offering through the department is what's called work release. What work release is, is the ladies will be allowed to participate in jobs within the community, within Muskogee and surrounding areas. And during that time, during incarceration, these ladies are what they're calling a community sentencing program. Now, in order to be a part of this program, we don't have any sex offender crimes. There's no violent offenders against anyone. Gun charges and robbery charges are automatically disqualified for participating in this program. I have 75 ladies as of today that are ready to go out and work with all those skill sets that I just mentioned and some others as well. When you hire these ladies, what you're going to get is a person that's going to be at work every day. We guarantee that. They're going to be at work. And with the help of the Muskogee Transit, we've come up with an agreement where they will provide transportation. So that means they'll be there every day and it'll be reliable transportation. These ladies, when they get out, they're now at a job. They're not just walking out the front door and with no idea what they're going to do next. We do job checks, kind of like a monthly performance evaluation. We'll be visiting, my staff will be visiting the job sites, making sure everyone is doing what they're supposed to do. If they're not, we will release that lady from that program and get you somebody else in there that is going to do the job for you. For the job, for the employer, there's a tax credit. It's called the Work Opportunity Tax Credit. You can stand to get $2,400 up to $9,600 for employing these ladies. If it's a large group, depending on how many you employ, depends on the tax credit. Now, and that's on a case-by-case basis based off of their employees. The benefits to the citizens, we're no longer paying for these ladies that are incarcerated. They're paying for their own incarceration. That's one piece. And then they give them back to society while they're incarcerated. Upon their release, they have a job. They don't just walk out the front gate wondering where they're going to go. If they choose to keep that job, it's available to them. However, if they choose not to keep that job, I have another lady waiting to come fill that spot so your job, that company is never without the employees that they need. Making them eligible, and then they're not eligible for public assistance. That's what I like. I'm tired of taking care of them after they get out. I know that bothers me. But it's also a sense of pride that we instill in these ladies. When they go out that front gate, they're no longer wondering, how am I going to eat? We're rebuilding families. These mothers are now getting back with their kids. And those drug charges and things, I tell my ladies all the time, I don't know what it means to be addicted to something but collard greens and egg bones. However, what are you going to do with that drug thing? I don't know how to address that. But what I have seen is when they walk out our front gate with a job, real money, because all their money is put in a savings account. They don't get to spend it. And when they leave, they want to do better. They want to see that. They no longer have to look over their shoulders to see how to spend the money that they've made during their incarceration. I've been doing community corrections for the department for 10 years. I've been in corrections for 30 years, and I've seen the change. True, we're going to have some that are going to fail, but the success is outweighs the failures. Thank you for your time.
One second. One.
Oh, I saw.
First of all, thank you for bringing that program to Muskogee. We were happy to visit with her several weeks back, as she may need a presentation or the council here's presentation as well. Do we have any questions for the warden from the members of the council?
I'd just like to say good job. It's been since, nice to know that you guys care. We're entering back into the society. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 15.
Receive annual report from Muskogee Tourism Authority to discuss their projects, goals, and activities, and take other necessary actions.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, Mayor, this is the council. The tourism authority has a question to give before our activities. This is council and the director Tammy Howell's here, and I'm very happy to turn my hand over to her for that presentation.
Mr. Miller, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you so much. I brought you a 97-page document that we could all read together tonight, so that will be so much fun. First, thank you for the opportunity to do this. We've been anxiously waiting to get on the agenda to present this to you. You will also get to hear an opportunity to meet all of our team members tonight, so we'll just walk through this. If you have any questions, certainly just let me know. Annual report booklet submitted to the partners and the city at the end of 2023, so this has been out for just a little bit, and we're thrilled to be able to present it to you tonight. We have been waiting anxiously, you know, to come and present all these details to you. The Muskogee Tourism Authority is charged with the operations of the Roxy Theater and the Visit Muskogee Tourism Program. Some people don't realize that, so I wanted to clarify that tonight. We have with us tonight most of our team. We have Melissa Lee in the back. That is our office manager. We have Oscar Ray, which is the general manager for the Roxy, and we have Demi Smith, which is our deputy director, and obviously, you know, I'm Tammy Howell, and here's our team tonight. So I wanted to share a couple of things with you. On my piece, I'm starting out on page six. First, we're really impressed with the way that this turned out. You know, it's hard to put into a booklet all that you've done throughout the year. It's hard to put in a few pages what all we've accomplished. We're proud of this, but I do want to start on page six, and I'll just go through these. You know, sometimes there's questions of like, exactly, what do we do? What do we offer? And so Visit Muskogee offers a range of services and functions aimed at promoting and supporting tourism in Muskogee. We certainly focus on our marketing and our promotion, our visitor information center, event planning and support, partnership and collaboration, market research and data analysis, support for the visitor services, destination development, advocacy and representation, tourism, education and training, and film recruitment. These are the highlights of the things that we do. You know, the marketing and the promotion is obviously, you can understand what that is, but our goal is to be a resource for all things happening in the Muskogee area. Our support for our visitor services is working with local hotels, businesses, and creating packages for groups looking to host an event or conference in Muskogee. Right here, I would like to plug in that we can't do this alone. We have a wonderful, I would like to say, a wonderful relationship with all of our partners, because I'm reminded each day that we are better together, and if we're all on the same page to promote our city, then we're willing to work together for that. So our partners and collaborations is a lot of, we have an opportunity to compete for our piece. We're in the process of doing a few of those right now. And again, all these things are bringing people to Muskogee. Our destination development provides grants and marketing assistance to help further develop new and existing attractions. You know, part of our role is to partner with other entities and partners in the community in supporting theirs. And then sometimes it's an opportunity for grants. It's an opportunity for sponsorship. Mainly, it's an opportunity of like, you have something to bring to the table, and so do I, so let's make it work together. Our advocacy is Visit Muskogee represents a city of Muskogee on the Oklahoma Travel Industry Association and Green Country Tourism Board, as well as others. Tourism and educational training hosts quarterly tourism partner meetings and moves around to different locations. The idea for this is to promote a local partner in town, give them an opportunity to share what's going on in their world, but then also the host of that gets them an opportunity to promote their business. So our quarterly meeting is actually March 6th for first quarter, and that's going to be at Per Concrete Winery. I know you all want an invitation to that, and you'll be getting that. The film recruitment piece is, it just launched the Film Friendly in Muskogee. We're excited about this. The website serves as a liaison for potential filmmakers looking for a film. That is kind of the highlights of what we do. It is all listed on page six. I just want to showcase and highlight just a few of those things. We're very proud of the things that we're doing and the partnerships that we're building, and that is important to us. The exciting piece I wanted to share with you is our new logo, and this is on page eight. This is something that we're thrilled about, and you see that. It's clean, it's fresh, it's new. To me, it's one of our greatest accomplishments that we've done this year, so we're very proud of that. So we've highlighted, you know, several of our pieces and different things like that also, and we'd like to invite Demi to come out. She's going to update you on just a few things, but before I leave for this second, do you have any questions on thus far?
Great. As Tammy mentioned, I'm Demi Smith. I'm the deputy director at Tourism in Muskogee, and I'm just going to touch on a few things on pages nine through 12 in the annual report here. As far as our activities guides, we have, are in the middle of updating our new one. This is our old one. I'll show you, because our new one's out for print right now. And we distribute these once a month to a lot of our local tourist hotspots around town, anywhere from the Turnpike to the Butterfly Papillion, all the way to the downtown local restaurants as well. And our agreement with certified holders distributes them statewide as well. We also have a ride guide that our Ride Muskogee has provided for us, and this little pocket thing folds up and has different routes for motorcyclists. And this was very popular at the trade show, at the Tulsa Boat Sports and Travel Show that we were at a couple of weeks ago. A lot of the bikers picked them up and didn't even realize how many routes were around eastern Oklahoma, so that was a big hit there. And it was a big hit with the Widow's Sons Motorcycle Conference that came in last October as well. As far as our, we have some visitor guides out as well that have our QR code on them, and they are at our hotels, at a lot of our local businesses and hotspots as well for any visitors to scan and be able to pull up our app and plan their trip just from our app alone. And then for, we also do some monthly email blasts that go out to our, any tourists who have signed up with that and our local, some of our local people as well who are interested in our events. There is, as far as social media, we have a huge stance on social media as far as some of our platforms go. They're Facebook, Instagram, Threads, YouTube, and X also. There are over 33,000 followers on our Facebook page alone, and that is slowly, or not slowly, but quickly growing as we continue to utilize those platforms for social, for advertising for local events and our businesses hosting those events. We have, we do have earned media that we probably partner with Muskogee Phoenix, the radio station, the Channel 6 News, In Go Day Tulsa as well, and you've probably seen our executive director Tammy Howell on some of those mentioned in the previous year to highlight some of the events that we have coming up and have had in the past, excuse me. We also did a Christmas guide. We partnered with the Phoenix and a couple of other local businesses who helped us really push those Christmas guides this last holiday season, and we really tried to make sure that we didn't miss anyone as far as businesses and, and local nightlife goes so that everyone was included on that and no one felt dismayed. I think that we really hit a lot of, this was a big hit, especially at the Honor Heights and the castle when it was passed out there, there, events. We also have a close partnership with Green Country Tourism, and it allows us to advertise with local attractions as well in reaching patrons outside of our normal market that we would get here. And then one last thing, actually, we'll discuss the Jefferson City Highway. The Jefferson Highway project is something that one of our local friends, Roger Bell, has really headed on over the last several years, and it's getting quite the attention nationwide. It's a famous highway route, if you're not familiar with it, and it comes right through the heart of Muskogee. You've seen the JH signs hanging around, and there will be more of those as ODOT continues to put those up. They will, you will start to see QR code signs along with those Jefferson Highway signs at the locations, historic locations in town, and those are going to be an interactive display that people can use their mobile device and be able to pull up our website, and through our website, it'll have the historic photos and descriptions of that place and any type of history that Mr. Bell has can provide for us along with that. So one last thing, our film-friendly website has really taken, taken a good, well, it gets, been invented, it's been put on our website. It is up for our film producers and production companies to be able to see what we have to offer for those places to be able to film in Muskogee. And if you have any more questions about that, my coworkers, Melissa and Oscar, could probably answer any of those questions. Do y'all have any questions for me? Thank you.
I am going to present page 13 and 14 of our lovely guide, and I'm going to present about our financials. I'm Melissa Lee, so I've met some of you. One of the things that you'll need to note is our operating revenue is about half of the total city hotel motel tax that is generated. The other thing that we are excited about is our grantees. That you'll notice on page 14 is all of our grantees that we were able to support in some way financially and by means of marketing. We look to continue to expand our grantees to bring new events to Muskogee as well as support local events. One of the great things that we also accomplished this year was develop and implement a online grant portal, which allows applicants to be able to submit their application for a grant or sponsorship online on our website, which makes it a lot easier to access. And the other application method is still available. They can still visit our office at any time during business hours. They can also request a paper form if that's what they wish, but the online portal is great because it is something that they can do at their convenience, as well as it's something that can be logged and reported, and everybody can see. It's completely transparent. And then lastly, our financials are audited or reviewed by our board on a monthly basis, and they are audited every fiscal year by an independent company. Again, if you have any questions, please. And then Oscar Ray?
Thank you, guys, for allowing us to do this. I'm going to cover pages three and four real quick, some things that are happening at the Roxy. Roxy is the last, our Roxy, the last Roxy in the state of Oklahoma. We're one of 20 art house theaters in the state, and at this juncture, I think there may be about 17 other three in Colorado. But the goal of the Roxy besides to get more local citizens involved in it and be entertained by it is also to make people want to come downtown and take a picture of that sign. If you go online right now, our Roxy is the most looked-up Roxy on Google of all the Roxy's in the world. They're only likely to be 45 in the entire world. But if you look at the amount of folks that come and look for what's happening at our Roxy, we're in number one, and so we worked very hard to make that happen. Last year, if you guys know, a lot of you, Kupi Kudinjuni came because he wanted to help us support the movie that was made here 20 something years ago, I guess maybe 30 years ago. And then, of course, we had movie premieres here, some of the most successful movie premieres, the first Bash, the movie that was actually made, was actually premiered here, and the place was totally packed. So event after event after event, the Roxy is trying to serve the people of Muskogee in a way that we would both be proud and we can see the future, future of it as part of the city. We are very fortunate that every single day someone stops across from the street here and they take a picture of that sign. Of all the Roxy's, only two have that particular sign. And so it's really been a huge help in bringing people to our downtown. And as you know, the downtown of a city is its heart. And so the focus of bringing people downtown by using the Roxy has been one of the major things that we consider in everything that we do, as we program for concerts and movies and the whole nine yards. That focus is how do we get more people to downtown Muskogee, and how do we get it more known across the 77 counties of the state of Oklahoma? And if you have any questions about what we're doing, what we're planning, if you have any suggestions, we're definitely up for those, because it's a challenge with all the other theaters out there, and they're doing their thing, and of course, you guys know what Netflix is never leaving the house. So we're trying to pull you out into an art house theater that has an experience that you might not otherwise have. Any questions at all?
I just want to say that it was wonderful when you had everyone there for the day of Renfro's play.
I wish I could say that was my idea. It really was. I think the mayor and somebody else said, oh, I came up with that.
Thank you. That was awesome.
Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, you're still with us. I just want to highlight a few more things, and we'll wrap this up. On page 14, Visit Muskogee is proud to provide funding to events that support Muskogee tourism and the economy. An online grant porter, like Melissa said, has definitely made this process a little easier. 63% of appropriation was committed to advertising and grants. These are the highlights you'll see on page 14. That is part of the money that we gave out for grants, and so that was an opportunity to promote all these events, so that's exciting. So last but not least, we want to turn to page 15. We, in 2023, the first ever Tourism Awards Banquet. And honored individuals, businesses, and organizations in Muskogee have made great contributions to the local tourism industry. With the collaboration of our team, we came up with some creative titles and some creative opportunities to share with those, and you can see across the board, you know, we have Volunteer of the Year, the Hoteller of the Year, the Collaboration of the Year, just a lot of different things. Last but not least, on page 16 and 17. On 16, the 2023 highlights would be launch the film Muskogee website, which was huge. We had the privilege of nominating and securing five civilized tribes museums to True West Magazine as a top 10 Western museum. That was national coverage, and that was absolutely huge. We successfully recruited and executed our first year of NJCAA reaching two statewide basketball tournaments. We We, I believe we did a pretty great job last year. And with that, we had an opportunity to bring, they signed another contract for three more years, so we're very proud of that, and that is two weeks away. So, we're excited about that. We also successfully hosted the grand gathering by the Widow's Sons Motorcycle Conference. Successfully recruited and executed the Bass Nation Central Region, and that was the qualifier. We had an opportunity to bid on that, and we had, we're bringing the, the larger scale of Central Region coming, and that's coming in April. I was invited to serve on the Green Country Tourism Board, which is a great resource and wonderful networking opportunity. We're also thrilled about the Red Bud Merit Award that we received for Best Brochure of Publication, and that was in 2023. That was presented to us for the, from the Oklahoma Travel Industry Association. Again, a great honor. We hosted tourism partnership meetings every quarter last year. We strengthened the ties with Native American partners, including Cherokee Nation to promote the Bass Nation Series Regional, Central Region, and the Muskogee Nations Promotes NJCA Basketball Tournament. So, those are the highlights. We certainly know this is a, you know, eighteen-page document. There's a lot of information in there. We're proud of what we've done, but we are looking ahead as we are already in, almost at the end of first quarter. We were able to attend the Tulsa Boat, Sports, and Travel Show, and that was in January, February. Our basketball tournament is in two weeks. The Torre 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 Air Show Practice, which we're excited about that, to bring something of that nature back to the Muskogee area. I grew up at the air show, I don't know if many of you probably did. That is coming in, also in March. The April third is the TNT Fireworks Bass Nation Series Qualifier at the Port of Muskogee, thankful for that partnership. We Motor Coach Association is coming, Jefferson Highway Convoy is coming. We also, Business Muskogee is actively seeking with local stakeholders to bring other things back to the Muskogee area, including the County Fair, which is one of my favorites. We have, I think, three RFPs in front of us, and so we're diligently reviewing that to see what that might look like. But we can't do this alone. We appreciate your support, and we appreciate your advice. We appreciate your suggestions, because all of that is very important to us and is for the greater good of our community. So, any questions?
Do you have any questions for our director on tonight?
Thanks for your time.
Item sixteen.
Public public hearing to discuss the outcome of the Community Development All-Operate Coronavirus Response CBPG Action CB2020, an application for funding to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus and take other necessary actions.
We will now open the public hearing, Mr. King.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, the coronavirus community development block grant that came out in 2020 was a program that eighteen communities were able to participate in during the coronavirus pandemic in order to address health and economic challenges brought on by the coronavirus. This was not only a great opportunity to help our community, but it was also a great way to show that when we partner with our community leaders and programs, together we are stronger and can make a difference in our community. As part of the requirements to close after grant, we are to hold a public hearing and provide a report on what happened during the grant, and to take comment on anything that came from, from the community and from the council. So, for the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program, the city of Muskogee chose three eligible activities to provide relief to the community. The first was food assistance boxes. These were food boxes that were given out to the community members that were sort of lower income or middle income, or elderly individuals, to help them with access to healthy nutritious food during the coronavirus, when it was difficult for a lot of people to get out and interact in an environment where you were almost definitely going to get sick. We served, we handed out a total of five thousand five hundred thirteen food boxes. One thousand nine hundred sixty-three of those were given out at the Civic Center, Rotary Park, and Hallowox Field. The other three thousand five hundred fifty boxes were given out directly to residents at their homes that did not have the means to get out and come to the community-wide drive. The cost for this was two hundred and three thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars, and that has been fully reimbursed, and we received those funds on September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two. The second program and eligible activity we did was we helped provide Green Country with data plans. So, what this was is during COVID-19, telemedicine became more important than ever. Who knew that was a thing? But it was important, especially for our low and moderate income people that had adverse reactions or, you know, were susceptible to coronavirus to get medical treatment they needed, either from having, getting the virus itself or just their regular checkups. With this, we were able to provide data plans to Green Country to help pay for those services on clients' and staff's iPads to provide that telemedicine and healthcare needs. A total of one hundred thirty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars was spent on the data plans, with another five thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars spent on time from administrative efforts. This has been submitted and fully reimbursed. The last eligible program was, item was the Muskogee County Transit Public Transmission Bus Filtration System. So, for forty-seven thousand dollars, we were able to outfit seven Muskogee County Transit buses with filtration systems and have enough money left to buy replacement filters for a complete year. As I said, the cost in this was forty-seven thousand six hundred twenty-three dollars. We have submitted this reimbursement, and it's currently being processed back to us. At the end of the grant, including the remaining eleven thousand five hundred dollars in administrative time for the city staff, as well as our partners at Neighbors Building Neighborhoods, we will have spent a total of four hundred and five thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars on the community to help combat coronavirus and make our community a better and safer place to live for upcoming pandemics down the road. With that, we will be able to take comments from the council and the public, and then be able to get this grant closed out and continue to help the community grow.
We have a resident signed up to speak to us tonight, so we will close the public hearing. We will open the discussion for council, if there is any. Mr. King, thank you so much for your work, and Mr. Miller for your staff and all that they have done. Item number seventeen.
Consider approval of ordinance number forty-two twenty-four A, an ordinance amending the City of Muskogee code ordinances by amending chapter eighty-two Utilities Part Six, Refuse Collection, Section eighty-two dash seven forty-three, Other Trash Containers, Adding Repealer Severability and Setting an Effective Date, or take other necessary actions.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, Mr. Rigney is actually going to present this, and he did at the Bus Public Works Meeting. This ordinance is just to clean up some past work that we have done in the sanitation department, and I'll turn it to Mr. Rigney.
Yes, thank you. So, if you can remember back to October of two thousand twenty-two, the council passed an ordinance that effectively removed the bags next to the trash carts during pickup. It's been tremendously, tremendously successful in improving the public image and cutting down on litter and debris in the streets. But the reason for this ordinance is there was a piece of our ordinance that we forgot to remove at the initial time. And thanks to the help of Ms. Tracy and Ms. Bowdenhammer, we caught that. And this is just a general housekeeping item to bring our code back into compliance with itself. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions, or what's the pleasure of the body? We have a motion and a second on item number seventeen, roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Wayadi Kred.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stow.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Monica Coleman.
Yes, the item passes, item number eighteen.
Consider approval of Resolution Number twenty-nine thirty-two, approving and authorizing execution of the Blue Cross Blue Shield Benefit Program Application and Required Addendums, Blue Cross Blue Shield Exhibit to the Stop Loss Coverage Policy, Prime Therapeutics Required Documents, and all other required documents, all to become effective May one, two thousand twenty-four, and authorizing the city manager or designate to execute all necessary documents for renewal and implementation purposes, or take other necessary actions.
Good evening.
Members of council. As you know, each year, the City of Muskogee Health Insurance Committee diligently reviews renewal options for the insurance plan. The committee carefully considers and evaluates each, each option to ensure that the selection made is most beneficial for the health fund and, more importantly, to the employees. The committee has selected a renewal they feel is the best option for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five plan year. This renewal has the following changes. We are increasing our specific stock loss or specific deductible from one hundred thousand to one hundred twenty-five thousand. This allows for stock loss premiums to drop significantly by just over a hundred thousand dollars a year. This selected renewal also increases the funding by the following. For employees who like to cover their dependence on the city's health fund, or health plan, sorry, they will see a slight increase. The tier that's, that will be affected the, the most is the employee spouse and two or more children, and that will be twenty-three thirty-nine per paycheck. But I want to remind you that that is a pre-tax deduction, and it will be a net increase of approximately nineteen dollars per paycheck. Again, this does not have any impact on employee coverage that is still paid at a hundred percent by the city, and we even subsidize part of dependent premiums. The city's bi-weekly contribution will increase by thirty-nine ninety-seven, resulting in an overall yearly cost increase for the city of approximately four hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred. The cost of healthcare is always rising, and our broker alliance is constantly looking for the best, most cost-efficient options for our employees. That being said, our colonial critical illness policy will be upgraded at zero additional cost, and other, all other benefits will remain the same, with no cost changes to any of the other policies. As a reminder, the quotes we get are only good for thirty days, and if this expires, a new quote could potentially increase due to any new claims that might come up. The health committee approved the renewal that we've just, just discussed, four to one, and staff recommends approval, but I believe Mr. Miller has a few things he'd like to say.
Yes, thank you. We want to thank the committee for working on this. It's not necessarily a fun job to have to deal with, with what we know because of the rising prices of healthcare, and you know, this happens kind of every year. I want to thank them for their work. I thank Maggie and her team that did present two weeks ago. I've not received any questions in the meantime from council, and so as Maggie said, we do recommend approval, but I have to answer any further questions.
Do we have any other questions from this body, or what is your pleasure? We have a motion and a second on this item, roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Wayadi Kred.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stow.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Monica Coleman.
Yes, the item passes, item number nineteen.
Consider approval of Resolution Number twenty-nine seventy-five, declaring the property located at ten sixteen South C Street in the city of Muskogee as surplus property, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a quitclaim deed for the subject property, or take other necessary actions.
Mr. King.
The property located at ten sixteen South C Street was deeded over to the city by the county on March seventh, two thousand sixteen. The property is located right in the middle of a residential area and serves no purpose to the city other than for someone to build a house and live on the property. This, so this property is fourteen thousand square feet with a lot width of ninety-eight feet and a lot depth of one hundred and thirty-nine feet, which means it meets all the requirements to be a buildable lot. And so since it has to be a buildable lot, when somebody wants to buy this surplus, this property, surplus property, it has to go to a ten-day bidding period. So, that period was opened by Mr. Hopkins on January fourth, or submit the prob, sorry. The application was submitted on January fourth, two thousand twenty-four, and the property was posted, and the bid opened on January ninth, two thousand twenty-four. So, for ten days, from January ninth to nineteenth, a bidding period was opened for anyone to bid on the property that may want to obtain it. At the end of that bidding period, no one bid on it, and so the opening bidder has defaulted the property. The property is currently zoned as R-five mobile home, and so it is, they can have a manufactured house, trailer, travel trailer, any of those types of transitional or otherwise non-traditional living means. They do have the opportunity to rezone it to another residential classification for a different style of house. At this time, we need to have the property declared a surplus by the council and then allow the city manager to negotiate and execute a quitclaim deed, so they may take this property and make sufficient use for it for themselves and their family, and help provide more housing to the city of Muskogee. I'll take any questions, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. King. Do we have any questions on this item, or what's the pleasure of the body?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Wayadi Kred.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stow.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Monica Coleman.
Yes, the item passes, item number twenty.
Consider approval of Resolution Number twenty-nine seventy-four, declaring items of personal property presently in the possession of the city of Muskogee to be surplus to the needs of the city of Muskogee, and authorize the city manager or his designate to offer for sale or dispose of the same, all as per the attached list, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Coleman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item pertains to a resolution requesting to surplus certain small pieces of equipment and furniture that is no, is no longer in operation with the city of Muskogee. Previously, this item has been reviewed by the Finance Committee. Staff recommends approval.
Do we have any questions for the presenter, or what's the pleasure of the body? We have a motion and a second on item number twenty, roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Wayadi Kred.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stow.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Monica Coleman.
Yes, the item passes, item number twenty-one.
Consider approval of change order number two for the AIP Project number three dash four zero dash zero zero six two dash zero one three at Davis Field, or take other necessary actions.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, Mayor and Council, Drew Sappel, our airport manager, usually presents these projects for the airport, but unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, so I'm going to present it. The airfield lighting improvements project at Davis Field was to run new wiring from the vault out into the runway, taxiway, and the Pappy lighting out at Davis Field. In doing so, they ran into some problems with the electrical junction structure number five, which is located up by that big white T-two-oh-five hangar, which we all call the old National Guard hangar. And by the way, this is the final change order, and we should have a closeout very soon. And when we do, we'll bring a PowerPoint to show you the project, so maybe that will be on the next agenda. Electrical junction structure number five, though, which is right there in that area by that T-two-oh-five hangar, had to be shifted north from the planned location due to a gas line running parallel to the existing east-west pavement along with a fiber optic line. The junction structure had to be placed between the gas line and the fiber optic line without room for adjustments. Shifting the electrical junction structure to this location caused a steep grade from the existing ditch that has been susceptible to erosions in periods of heavy rain. Electrical junction structure five has three conduits entering the structure from the east and south with six five-thousand-volt cables for the runway, taxiway, and Pappy home run circuits. This change will protect the home run circuits from erosion and possible damage from future mowing operations. The change order is also going to consist of additional time by three working days, one day added for the earthwork, one day added for forming, and one day added for concrete placement. So, what they're basically doing is there's a ditch lined right by that structure, so they're going to concrete line the ditch. They're going to put a concrete bottom in it and three-to-one side slopes with concrete on them. So, a total of about fifty yards of concrete. The original contract price for this project was seven hundred and eighty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-seven cents. Net increases of this change order were three thousand twenty dollars and twenty-five cents. Total decrease of all previous change orders is one thousand one hundred and three dollars and forty cents. Total increase of all change orders to date, so that with the increase and decrease, is one thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-five cents, or roughly two thousand dollars of the seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar project. So, the total contract price is going to be seven hundred eighty-five thousand seven seventy-seven and forty-two cents, which Brian Coons, our engineer from Olson Engineers, told me is still running about twenty thousand under the budgeted price for the project. This is funded by funding that comes from our entitlement funds, which we get from the state, which gets from the FAA, the OAC from the FAA, and it's also funded by discretionary funding. Again, we'll have a PowerPoint when we close this project out, but do recommend approval and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Do we have any questions on item number twenty-one, or what's the pleasure of the body?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Wayadi Kred.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stow.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Monica Coleman.
Yes, the item passes, item number twenty-two.
Consider approval of a contract renewal with Midwest Employers Casualty Company for excess workers' compensation insurance in the amount of one hundred eighteen thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars, or take other necessary actions.
Ms. Bowdenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. By health and safety means, man is our workers' comp payments filed by employees in the city for work-related injuries. We are self-insured up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for police and fire, five hundred thousand dollars for the remaining employees. five hundred thousand dollars for the remaining employees. We have to have an excess insurance coverage just in case any of the workers' compensation claims go above our amounts, that we self-insure. Last year, we had M, if I can say it right, MECC. Their policy quote to us, what we paid was ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. This year, their quote is a hundred eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. They said that that is based on, they increased them, had to have their payroll, they had to up all their rates. We have checked with Safety National and other insurance companies for excess workers' compensation claims. They quoted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars minimum, and said that because they could not be competitive, they refused to really give us a, a, a right quote. Our insurance quoted a hundred thirty thousand to two hundred thousand for their policy, so MECC remains our least expensive carrier at a hundred eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. And they have given us an option to lock this rating for two years, so we don't look at a rate increase next year if council approves. Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions on item number twenty-two from Ms. Bowdenhammer, or what's the pleasure of this body?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stow.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Monica Coleman.
The item passes, item number twenty-three.
Consider the appointment of Councilor Shirley Hilton Flannery to the Council Management Relations Subcommittee, replacing Councilor Perlin Boyadi Craig, or take other necessary action.
Dr. Whoos.
This is my item. I spoke with Councilor Stow and Councilor Boyadi Craig. We do have some appointments that will be coming up right after the new council takes place that we need to make sure that we kind of have a clean transition, in particular, any contract amendment that we come up that we'll discuss later. So we felt this was the best to make sure that we can ease this transition to when we can address that quickly instead of having to start over.
I'll take that as a motion. We have a motion. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stow.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Monica Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. No citizens have signed to speak thus tonight. Are we striking item A? We're striking item A from the executive session. The clerk will now read items B and C.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. See pursuant to Section three oh seven v. four Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss workers' compensation claims, number ten dash nineteen dash seventy eighty-five, and number ten dash twenty-one dash seventy-six twenty-four, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. See pursuant to Section three oh seven v. four Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session with attorney Matt Seale to provide an update regarding PFAS contamination, N-RAY Aquas Film Forming Funds Products Liability Litigation, MDL number two eighteen dash MN dash two eight seven three, United States District Court, District of South Carolina, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session.
I will now entertain a motion to go into executive session. We have a motion convening to executive session, second. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stow.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Mayor Monica Coleman.
Yes, we will now convene to executive session, although if you do not party to the session, please wait until you have discussed. Convene from executive session, roll call.
Mayor Monica Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stow.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Here.
Patrick Cale.
Here. Ms. Bowdenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to three oh seven v. four Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss workers' compensation claims, number ten nineteen seven oh eight five, and number ten twenty-one seven six two four. And an appropriate motion at this time would be to approve the claim as discussed in executive session.
Do we have motions of that effect? So we, we have a motion and a second, roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.